Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds? Ms. Meeks? Ms. Moody? Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Dr. Patton?
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, during this evening's public work session, we will have two presentations. The first presentation is the Quarterly Financial Report presented by the Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Alice Kelly. This report covers the financial results from July 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. This covers the first six months of the FY '16. As the city's financial staff continue to move in a forward direction with financial acuity, you will continue to be presented the quarterly financial results at the end of each quarter. The second presentation is the FY 2017 Budget Forecast. Members of City Council, as you are aware, we're in the midst of our operating budget process. Over the past two weeks, we hosted three budget community engagement sessions throughout the city, thereby allowing our citizens to be a part of the budget presentation process and be involved in engagement. As we earlier engage municipal departments, organizations, and agencies, and meeting regularly with Portsmouth Public Schools, tonight we embark on a third stage of developing -- in developing the FY 2016 budget, with Ms. Gloria Washington providing an overview of the FY 2017 Budget Forecast. Mrs. Kelly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, and members of City Council, I'm pleased to submit our quarterly financial results for the quarter ending December 31st, 2015. These reports are unaudited, and they're based on a cash basis, so what we try to do is compare not only budget to actual, but budget to actual from the previous fiscal year, so you can see where we're trending. The first report is our general fund, and it compares our revenues and expenditures. And the second report is some major funds of our city. Revenues are tracking about the same as compared to last year's budget, and expenditures or encumbrances for FY 2016 are slightly lower than the budget compared to FY '15. For the next City Council meeting, we will have a few budget transfers that we will need to present to council to cover some unexpected expenditures or some expenditures that are trending slightly higher. Those include some lease expenses, animal shelter needs, some parks and rec expenses, and some emergency costs for some of the recent storms. However, we do plan on moving FY 2016 budget amounts around to cover those expenses versus taking them from fund balance. That's the end of my report, and if you have any questions?
So you have found places to already to cover those things that you?
Yes, we will have some savings in some accounts that we will be able to cover.
So if I'm looking at this right here?
It's under there.
See, March is, March is, what?
March will be the third, end of the third quarter.
Okay, so we expect what? Real estate, not real estate, but business taxes and et cetera in March?
Mm-hmm.
And then property in June, is that right?
Yes.
So based on?
Revenue. And then, and then there are some savings in some salary accounts and some savings elsewhere. That's why we're waiting another month or so, just to make sure that we're comfortable with what we have to do as budget transfers.
Okay, so you'll give us the breakdown of that?
Mrs. Culpepper is presenting, or scheduled to present, at the March 8 meeting. And Mrs. Washington was going to mention that in her presentation.
Any other questions or comments on the financial quarterly update? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Washington?
Good afternoon, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of City Council. As the City Manager has stated, this presentation will provide an overview of our FY 2017 Budget Forecast. As a part of this overview, we will review the following: definition of revenue and expenditure drivers, revenue drivers, expenditure drivers, projected FY 2017 Budget Forecast, and key budget dates. Definition of revenue and expenditure drivers. Identifying which activities influence the revenues and expenditures which will allow city government more efficient and effective management of organizational strategies for existing core programs and services. For example, one of our key revenue drivers is real estate assessment-based changes. This factor will in part impact one of our largest revenue sources, real property taxes, which we currently budget at $90 million. We have been meeting with the assessor in order to assist in projecting our revenues for FY 2017. Subsequently, Ms. Culpepper will be presenting a report to City Council on March 8 to provide final data for commercial and real estate assessment changes which will impact our forecast. Another example of a revenue driver is major impacts to the economy and unemployment rates within the region, which directly impact some of our consumer-driven taxes such as sales and meals taxes. A preliminary projection of the FY 2017 general fund revenues as compared to the FY 2016 adopted budget show overall a flat revenue base. The good news is that at this point, some of our key revenues such as sales tax and meals tax and other revenue generators are meeting budget, as Ms. Kelly has indicated in her second-quarter revenue expenditure update. Some of our expenditure drivers that will impact our forecast are VRS and life insurance rate changes, that's plus $195,000. These changes are based on state-mandated policy. Also note that the City Manager and Budget Team are continually reviewing health insurance initiatives to provide the best quality yet efficient healthcare service to our city employees and to mirror best practices throughout the Commonwealth. We are also continuing to review programmatic level and staffing models for public safety programs to ensure that we are providing the best and safest environment for the citizens of Portsmouth.
So even with taking these people off that were, who shouldn't be up there, we're still expecting an increase? We talked about people who were on before, shouldn't be on insurance plans?
Right, that doesn't put an impact, yes.
That has no impact on this?
No.
Well, this, this is VRS.
This is VRS.
This is VRS.
Virginia Retirement System.
So, 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 wasn't there some money we were talking about we might have to pay to them?
They're trying to get some of the money back from health and dental?
That may be one, one employee, not?
They're not counting it for this?
No.
Okay.
So that, so that could be higher?
Yeah. If it's not accounted for, then it's got to be?
Yeah.
Right, if, if in fact we have to, we don't know that yet.
Right.
We have not gotten a ruling like that.
Okay.
And again, these are preliminary projections, we're in the planning phase, so we're just trying to sort of give a snapshot of some of our revenue and expenditure indicators. Priority equipment requirements. Public safety vehicles and capital equipment needs are being reviewed by our internal city and schools' infrastructure and finance teams to determine various financing options and priority needs. We're looking at overall needs of $5 million. As part of our process, we will pare down and look at what our core services are for public schools and city, but we want to just, at least to show this figure that that's the top level of need for both the city and schools.
The placeholder.
The placeholder.
Yeah, we're going to see more in the figure, we're going to see a breakdown.
This is just a projection.
This is five more than a million than we, than last year, correct?
Ask that question?
See, is this?
It's five more million plus what we budgeted last year?
Yes.
So you're saying this is five million over and beyond what we budgeted last?
But this is just a forecast and a projection, we are not there at whether or not or what we will actually need, these are just projections.
Last year, we said that we weren't to hold up on buying any vehicles except for the police cars and school buses, is that correct?
And that's what was purchased last year, but, but?
How many police cars were purchased? Because my understanding, they're still sharing police cars?
I'm not certain, I don't know why, why the, I'm not certain, but I don't, there's a number that's saying in my mind, 17, but I think they requested 17, but I don't know if they purchased that many.
And it was a million dollars for?
School buses are 10 with their million dollars.
For the million dollars.
Because my understanding, we're still sharing police cars.
Well, when we look back over vehicle services and how vehicles were purchased, compared to how we purchased in the past and how there was a system that we knew how many were upcoming, I would say that there is, there has been a deficit in purchasing, and that's what we are trying to address, and that's why?
We all lag behind trying to catch up.
Lag behind, that's maybe a better word, lag behind. And that's why we have that up there, because we need to address it.
Okay.
But that's just a placeholder, that is not the amount, these are just forecasts.
Go back to debt service, don't?
Debt service payments plus $683,000. This is based on existing FY 2016 authorized CIP projects.
Now, our total debt service projected in the current budget was only 400 and some million, I mean, that?
What was it? The debt service for the city, the general fund is 27 million for FY '16, which is an increase of 683.
I'm talking about total debt.
Total debt.
But, but the projected debt service, I think, was 39 million for this year.
That could include the public utilities also, so this is just talking about general fund. It's 683, that's just built in that the payment's going up based on what we've borrowed already.
Okay, so that, that'll be over the current projection of 39 million? Or is that?
Yeah, that'll be the same, but debt service from last year to this year in general fund is going up $683,000.
Okay, and the, and the 2016, 2017?
Comparing 2016 to 2017, that's not adding any more additional debt, and we are taking a look at that, seeing what projects we can do, how we can finance differently to maybe even make that come down. That's very doubtful, but we will be trying doing that, and we're working on that this month.
What's making it go up? What?
Debt service increases as, as you borrow money. Yeah, it's just, it's just a, it's just the, it's just the actual, how much we've borrowed and how much it's due.
I think it's projected to increase what, through 20?
24, right?
22?
21 or 22, you were right, yes.
But what's the, what's the total debt? The number I mentioned was total debt, is that staying flat?
That'll stay, that'll stay the flat. What we're doing is flat right now and what our drivers are right now, and then we have to make decisions on what we want to finance for next year, and how we want to do that. There might be some refunding opportunities also in the next few months.
Okay.
Captain Rhodes Transit, plus $103,000. We provide about $2.8 million for public transportation needs for the city of Portsmouth. The projected increased request is to address capital needs for the replacement of an aging fleet of HRT buses, this is the city's share. Regional jail, preliminary projected increase, $125,013. The city's commitment in FY 2016 is $5.3 million for jail per diem cost for the regional jail. This is a 5% increase of $102,5,000 based on contractual increase related to inmate medical costs and other personnel-related expenses. Senior citizen tax relief program. In looking at the prior year three actual, we're projecting that we can have a savings there of about $100,000, we actually budget $2.2 million to provide relief for citizens based on established criteria for City of Portsmouth citizens.
Can we go back to the regional jail? Can we get a count of how many bids we're using on an average?
Yes, we can.
And that tax relief program, I don't think we've ever hit the number that we budgeted over the last few years. We lowered it last year because we hadn't hit it over a couple of years ago, so we're projecting $100,000 savings from there.
And I'm betting what that, what Councilwoman just asked for, we had it before by monthly, what they authorized, what we was for the field and what we actually filled, you know? You know, we have, we pay for what we actually, what we pay for and what we fill. We paid for 240 in January, we only filled 200, that kind of thing, that's what?
Monthly.
Yes, sir.
Monthly.
But this $125,000 is the contractual requirement?
Based on 240, 250 beds, yes.
But we still want to know if we're using the bids?
Yes, no, I understand, it's two different questions.
Two different things.
Well, because we're paying it on this side, we're not?
We need to be using it.
Right.
Funding for a municipal internship program, $50,000. Again, this is part of a forecast, so these are planning placeholder numbers, and the purpose of this municipal internship program is to generate interest in local government careers for students at the academy, apprentice, undergraduate, graduate, or other continuing education level. This will also provide interns a career development opportunity to serve in municipal government. Right now, we have a current municipal intern, Mr. Marquise Hunt, who I think we've introduced before, so we would like to try to expand this program for FY '17.
What's the total allocation?
$50,000.
We're projecting.
Plus 50.
That's across the board, but what we're looking at, and when we say city intern, there are many opportunities, and one of the things that has come through in our community of budget initiatives is the public's interest in vocational education. And there was a time, since I was here, coming in the 80s, that we had students that came in and worked during the summers in skilled areas that didn't require them to leave or have to go to college, and we hired some of them after they finished high school, particularly landscape and properties management to work. This will give an opportunity for such engagement by students working in the summer to be brought back into how we begin to build our future workforce.
How many, pardon me, you think you have? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead. No, I just think that number's extremely low.
That's right, we, we were, we've been talking about it, because we're just starting, we want, we want just a few, because we didn't want to?
You haven't figured out how many?
No, no, we didn't, we didn't think we could start out at 30 or 40 because of the cost, and that's why we said?
I think everybody thinks it's a great idea.
Yeah, oh yeah. No, I mean, I envision having some of these young people over all of our departments?
That's what we're thinking.
In and out of this building, that's why I say I think that number's low.
Right, so we will?
And rotating from department to learn, to learn how all of city government works.
Right, he, he, it's HR, attorney, I think Mr. Thomas tonight said, is he kind of going across? So, you know, we're, he's, he's working and getting experience throughout. So what I will say, Council, is let us, as this is a forecast and projected, let us, we're working with HR on the program, let us get it to where we think we can broaden it and have a realistic number. Thank you.
That was, that was interesting. I was interested in a larger?
That's what we'll, we'll come back with, thank you.
Allocation of funding for annual leave payouts in non-departmental. And more to explain this, this is proposed allocation for annual leave payouts for funding within non-departmental versus departments having to utilize existing salary funding that are allocated for authorized positions. In a lot of cases, and I've looked at other localities, when you have funding specifically for authorized positions, and you have to do annual leave payouts based on when departments or employees are leaving, it sort of penalizes the department. They can't fill their authorized positions, which impacts service delivery. So this is a methodology that we're recommending, that we actually have centralized funding in non-departmental. This way, it will allow us to track the amount of annual leave payouts that we're doing.
So you can float that over anybody that needs it?
That's what it's happening.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, you lost me completely.
Annual leave payouts for employees that are leaving based on their, their annual leave accumulation.
I just quit.
Well, we had, let's say we had 11 who have left in the last, at the department head level.
Right, and you owe me 40 hours of, 240 hours of annual leave?
Right.
Okay.
Currently, that has to come out of the department's vacancies, and there has not been a?
Okay, so you had to spend that money to pay me off?
Yes.
So it was big, so now you don't have the money to hire?
That is exactly right.
I need to take the job.
Absolutely, absolutely. When we look across how, how we should have it set up, this is what we recommend, because this is what you do.
Okay.
And because this is a new policy, that's why you're, it's right now zero, and you're adding plus 300?
It's, it's not a new policy.
No, I'm saying, all right, because you got plus 300, you don't already have?
You never, you, what the city did was what we're saying. You would go into a department and take where it was a position vacant, the money.
Correct.
Whereas, you couldn't track really how much money we're paying for annual leave payout. And in this way, if we put a number there, a budget, then when, when someone is leaving and I, and I have to be paid 7,000, 8,000, 20,000, or whatever, then it comes out of that.
It doesn't matter if it's to the attorney department?
It doesn't matter where, everyone would come out, that's right.
And what's the max that they can carry over from year to year?
The APD says 352. As of December 1st, December 31st, at the close of business, anything over that if you haven't used, you lose.
Rent 350?
52 is all that you can carry.
Okay.
Our projected 2017 budget forecast. And again, this is a forecast at a point in time?
Don't look at me when you say that.
Pardon?
Don't look at me when you say that.
This is a forecast at a point in time where we have completed our budget defense meetings and we have done the community engagement. We will now be meeting with the real estate assessor, reviewing our revenue indicators, looking at expenditure trends, looking at projections of our annual operating revenues again, operating expenses, incremental operating costs, and looking at fund balance levels for one-time expenditures. This 2017 budget forecast is based on a structurally balanced policy with recurring revenues matching recurring expenditures. This forecast is an internal planning tool to assist the City Manager and Budget Team to provide a proposed balanced budget to City Council and our cities, and our citizens. Fund balance will only be reviewed and utilized for one-time priority expenditure needs such as a capital improvement transfer, one-time expenditures. This practice will maintain the city's compliance with our financial policies and rating agencies' best business practices to ensure financial acuity for the City of Portsmouth. The Budget Team and City Manager are also reviewing the following initiatives. City employee compensation options, which will include, as one of the data elements, review of a living wage philosophy, impact of changes in the real estate assessment base, as noted previously, which will be forthcoming per the March 8 presentation by the city's real estate assessor.
They're billing you up, Janie. They're billing you up, they've mentioned that five times.
She's ready. She says she's ready.
You saw a differential, right?
That's a projection.
Impact of budget defense findings, restructuring, collaboration, efficiencies are being reviewed continually throughout this process, and any impact of new debt service, as Ms. Kelly talked about earlier, associated with critical infrastructure and equipment requirements for the Portsmouth Public Schools and the city are also being reviewed by our various internal teams.
And if I could, Mayor, number three, impact on budget fences. Although we've had our meetings, we are, we are still zeroing down on how we can be more effective and efficient in spending money, and how we can reduce things that have been done. And we're looking at all aspects of that.
These are key budget dates, and I just wanted to note a few that we're going to come back to you on February 23rd, with strategic discussion and overarching themes for the 2017 budget. Again, the real estate assessor will do her presentation on March 8. The City Manager, budget presentation to City Council on March 29th, April 26th, 2017 operating NCIP public hearing, and May 10th, adoption of the FY 2017 operating NCIP budget.
No, it hadn't been mentioned, but does this assume a flat tax, real estate tax?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Until, until the 8th.
Right now.
Right, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Washington.
I'd like to say, Mayor and Council, before the 22nd, the liaisons for education will be meeting with the liaisons for school education with the City Manager and Deputy City Manager, and be ready for the 22nd dinner meeting.
I'd be curious from, to, just to the liaisons, how are we progressing with this whole shared service piece and opportunities that we can use to save some dollars with school and on the city side, so we're not doing the duplication? I know we keep talking about it and we're working in that thing, so, all right? Any other questions? Yeah, Dr. Whitaker?
Dr. Patton?
Yes, sir.
At our last meeting, the, since we're talking about the budget, the post-65 retirees issue, did we get any information to reconcile what was orally given versus what was?
We were going to have that presented tonight, but because we have the closed session, we have referred that to next meeting. However?
Highlight form?
Just quickly, the department human rooms started mentioning working with our health insurance provider to quantify the amount of money saved, and we anticipate having that by the next City Council meeting. And the funding for the HRA, the question was asked, was it, was it, it was budgeted for two years, I think Mr. Moody said he had heard that, but the funding for the HRA was not budgeted and was deducted from the city's health insurance fund?
And the other thing that's?
They're coming back.
So fusing to them is that we refer to it as a pilot program, but in the correspondence to them in rolling out the program, that never mentioned a pilot program.
Right, and I shared with, in, when the mayor asked a question in our meetings that we have before, that when the word pilot came, when, came about, when we looked at the retirees going forward and their families not, which they are still on Optima, and the health agency or health provider saying, let's see how this will, how, how this will work. So when we, when I, when we heard that, that is why the word pilot, because now we're, we've come back since we are here and we're new we're, we've come back since we are here and we are new to say, the families should have gone with the retirees and they didn't. So that's how that came up, not part of the letter, but just how we are looking at it, because we've got to work to get this group over with the families, with the, as a family.
But are we coming to a solution for the 485 or 435 in this year's budget?
The 4...
It's $430,000 a year for last year and this year to cover their gap.
To cover, it was...
The $1,400.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a HRA, it's not, it's not a gap.
Right, I know, but it's their, I'm saying their...
It's $439,000.
So it's, it's 300, it's, I mean, it's $430,000, it's $1,400 a month.
No.
No, annually.
It's not $1,400 a month.
It's $1,400.
You get a one-time.
Not a month.
It was a one-time $1,400.
One-time.
$1,400.
Right.
Let's sort of get back next month.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get...
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Patton, I mentioned to you earlier, there was some comments on Facebook earlier today about the problem with parking here now that the police headquarters shares the garage space and that people are coming just before 5 o'clock and are having a hard time parking. And we're talking about parking over behind the jail.
Yes.
And people don't have to pay those meters after 5 o'clock, do they, anywhere?
No, they do not. No, they do not. So the public can park, if they're coming to the city council meeting and the garage is filled, they can park out there with no cost to pay.
Just like they don't pay in here?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Liaison reports, Dr. Whitaker?
Before we go into the close...
Mayor, I haven't finished mine.
Oh, okay, all right, hold on. Dr. Whitaker had a question.
Well, before we go into, are we going to get an update on the Lake Kilby water treatment project as far as the breaking down of that contract, the questions that we have?
You're dealing with the procurement piece.
Right.
I do have, hold on.
Has that gone, has that gone out to bid?
No, 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 no. Give me just a minute, sir. I'm looking for, uh, public utilities. Hold on. I don't see public utilities. I can't find my tab here, but I know it's here. If you could speak to it, Mr. Um...
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, Dr. Whitaker. We're in the process of revising bid specifications to include the information that we need. A bid has not been published.
So, so is that bid going to be broken out into, into different pieces, or is it going to be one, one bid?
Right now, it's one bid. It's a total bid.
So, so how are we planning on including the minority participation piece?
Part of the bid evaluation includes the minority business piece, that that's part of the bid evaluation. They have to put a minority business plan and show the amount of the contract that's going to minority businesses. So that's part of the bid submission.
Is that, is that going to be finalized, or is it going to go out the bid prior to our next council meeting?
I can't promise you that. We're working very hard to get that done.
Well, well, the reason I ask you that was, that should be recorded before it goes out.
Oh, we know that. We're, we're not moving forward with the language before. We'll be coming back.
Okay.
But when I met with and talked with, and I found what I had, when I met and talked with Mr. Owens and Mrs. Tremere, they indicated that if they rushed, or if he rushed, he could have it within two weeks. And I said, we don't want you to rush and do anything. We want it to be correct.
Right.
And if it takes two to three weeks, as long as I know that they are working on, then we'll come back.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Simmons.
All right, Dr....
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, members of city council, you have before you your city council vision and guiding principles with the most recent highlighted edits provided by Vice Mayor Simmons. With your approval tonight, which it is on the, the agenda for approval, the city clerk will affix your signatures and we'll be ready to have it online tomorrow. So this is on, on the council agenda for tonight.
Yes, sir.
Since we've had some updates that just occurred today, there's, there's no rush on the vision vote. Can we put that off to next week to have a chance to, to read it instead of just getting it tonight?
We could. I thought, I thought we were highlighting just the parts that, that was it. But I think the only thing we changed was adding the Atlantic area and the medical piece.
That's it.
Yeah, that was it.
We had missed the US Atlantic Fleet was not in there.
So can, if there's no rush, can we, can we put it off to next meeting?
We can. Nothing we didn't defer before. We need to get, we can do that to the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Let's do that.
There's no bell ring.
Yeah, all right, very good.
Okay. I also, before closing my part, Mayor, I'd like for council to know that the, we have set the date for the swearing-in ceremony for our new police chief, Ms. Tanya D. Chapman, for Monday, February 22nd, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. in the city council chambers. And the city clerk will be polling you all to see if you're attending or available, if you're attending.
Very good.
All right, this ends my report for the public work session.
Okay.
Any liaison reports before we go into close?
Okay.
I have one question. Ms. Ashby, when we were talking about the contract language, your, your expression on your face changed. Are we overstepping in any ways, or?
No, so far as we move forward with the language, of course, I'm working with Ms. Amis to make sure we're complying with all the rules and just trying to make sure he has all the language he can muster in terms of trying to accomplish the council's goals.
But they are working together.
All right. Might want to take this in the close?
The 27th. Swine end of 27?
Yes. I move to go into closing meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsections 2.2 dash 3711A6 and 8.29, for the purpose of discussing the award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds and investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved. Where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city in the financial interests of the city, specifically regarding existing and potential future contract relationships with the Southeastern Public Service Authority for Waste Disposal Services.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in close. Thank you.